All right, good evening and welcome. This is a public hearing of the Zoning Board of Appeals of the City of Evanston. The zoning ordinance directs this body to hear applications for major variations, special uses, and appeals from decisions of the zoning administrator. Depending on the type of matter, this board will either make a final determination or send its recommendation to city council. Melissa, will you call the roll, please? Lisa Deacon. Scott Gingold.
I'm here.
Mary McCauley.
Present.
Mary Beth Burns.
Here.
Violetta Cullen. Myrna Aravalo.
Here.
Carol Miranchev.
Here.
With five people present, we do have a quorum tonight. Also present tonight is zoning administrator Melissa Klotz. This is a formal meeting, and there are rules that govern our proceedings. Most importantly, only one person speaks at a time, so all testimony may be accurately recorded. Anyone who wishes to address the board regarding any matter on the agenda will have the opportunity to do so at the appropriate time. Our procedure is to hear from staff on the documents on file and then receive testimony and other evidence from the applicant or appellant. Next, persons who wish to make a statement regarding the matter may do so at that time. Any person with a legal interest in property located within 500 feet of the subject property may present evidence, reasonably question witnesses, or seek a continuance of the hearing. When all supporting and opposing testimony and statements have been heard, the applicant or appellant will be given the opportunity for rebuttal or a closing statement. Then, the board will close the record and begin deliberations. All testimony will be under oath. Although we do not apply the strict rules of evidence, please limit your testimony or statement to your personal knowledge. When you address the board, please state your name and address and sign in on the provided sheet. Our meetings are audio and video recorded. Please make sure that you are at a microphone when asking questions or making statements so that you can be properly recorded. All proceedings are subject to broadcast at a later date. Any matter not concluded at tonight's hearing will be continued to our next regularly scheduled meeting. There's one item on the agenda tonight, and that is 619 Howard, and I'm guessing you are them. All right, so the first item on our agenda, though, tonight is the approval of meeting minutes. Are there any comments?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of March 19, 2019.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I will note those not voting were not here at that meeting. Okay, before I have Melissa read in, 619 Howard Street, can I have anybody who is going to talk tonight? Raise your right hand. Thank you. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings? Thank you. Melissa, will you read the case into the record, please? Oh, I also want to note that Violetta Cullen has arrived, so we now have six members. Thank you. Thomas Alman, architect, applies for a special use permit for a banquet hall facility in the B3 business district, zoning code section 6943. The Zoning Board of Appeals makes a recommendation to city council, the determining body for this case. Documents included as part of the record include special use application submitted March 14, 2019, business summary, parking statement, plot of survey, site plan, elevations, image of property, aerial view of property, zoning map of property, DAPR meeting minutes excerpt of April 3, 2019, and DAPR draft meeting minutes excerpt of April 10, 2019. Thank you. You guys could come up and tell us about your project, please. You start with your name and business address, please.
My name is Thomas Alman. I'm the architect. My business is at 1234 Sherman.
Mohamed El Dibani. I live at 2819 Gerard Evanston.
Thank you.
So, as you read in the report, it was formerly the Sherman Williams Paint Store, and my client would like to make it an event space. The zoning ordinance refers to a banquet hall, and that will be one of the functions there, the main function. We have met with DAPR. There were some concerns earlier about some modifications to the building that were proposed, including some windows on the east. We modified the design to address those concerns about sound. I don't know if you have any questions. I'd be happy to answer them.
Can you describe, other than the function as a banquet hall, what other functions the space will have?
So, the space is a creative space, and we are, hopefully, have a very nice, open space where people can come in and have whatever event they want: weddings, corporate functions, fundraising, you know, art exhibits. We could have also some small concerts, things of that nature.
I read in the packet that for a music event, that would not require any chairs, that the capacity of the space was over 1,000. Is that right?
Well, according to square footage, that's the number, but we do not anticipate to ever having that many people.
Okay.
That was based on the IBC requirements for standing, which is five square feet per person, but like Mohamed said, that's not anticipated.
Right.
We have provided adequate exiting and plumbing in that case.
For that number?
For that number, right.
Okay.
So, I think I read in the packet that as a banquet space, that the capacity is expected to be something between 400 and 500. Is that correct?
Yes, I think it's, you divide the square footage by 15 square feet, something like that, yes.
So, what will you do about parking for events that are hosted there?
That's a very good question. We have a plan, and the plan is we've approached the gateway parking structure, which is about 10 minutes from us, and they have told us, told me personally, that at any time we want, they have 400 spaces available for us, and on the weekends and evenings, they could even have more. I brought them to the property, showed them the property, and I went back with them to the facility and drove all the way up and down. They really have a lot of space. I mean, their capacity is about maybe 700 to 800 spaces.
So, is the theory, then, that your customer who's renting the space will then pay for parking accessory to that night, or what's the setup supposed to be?
Well, we, I approached him, asked him, can we actually also have a special discount for our customers? And they're definitely open to that. Go ahead.
Sure, no, I just wanted, for completeness, there's a couple of other things. We're working with the Peckish Pig and India and her mom Deb, and India has, and I think this is in the report, has spoken to another business on Howard for, when we don't need that many more, I think there's a parking lot of about 20 spaces that's right there on Howard.
I want to get back to the questions about the big events, because that's the parking concern. So, can you just finish describing what you were, the arrangement that you described?
So, the parking garage can hold a lot of people. I think the majority, the larger events are probably going to be something like people come in and not really sit down. There is a bridge that goes from second floor of the garage to Howard Street. You cross over the L, the train, excuse me, the bus station, and you walk to our facility. It's about 16-minute walk. It's not that far. We also have, we're going to advertise, we're going to have a plan where we get a contract with maybe a shuttle bus or trolley bus, where they actually would be shuttling people back and forth from the parking garage to our facility. And also, in general, if there is a large event like this, most people don't use public, don't drive cars. I mean, we always advertise not to drink and drive. So, what would say, you know, if you want to come to our event, if you have, you know, then please use the public transportation or, you know, use the shuttle that we would have.
Thank you.
Sir, have you?
I did, thanks.
Have you talked to anybody, like a fire marshal, just to see what the occupancy would be for that space?
Yeah, so the Tristan, Mario Tristan, who is the representative of the Fire Department at DAPR, was present at the, at the DAPR meetings, which recommended the project.
And they agree with your numbers?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, he pointed out that they would probably, we would probably need a new water service, and then it would be sprinkled and alarmed, which, of course, we understand.
And they agree with 400, 500, and 1,000 standing?
I don't want to speak for him, but he was at the meeting, and DAPR approved it, and I didn't hear any concerns.
Okay. And my other question is, what hours do you intend on operating?
Well, the hours, most hours are going to, and let maybe Deb mention, talk about that, the hours are going to be mostly in the evening.
Like, till when?
Starting maybe on the.
11 o'clock.
Yeah.
11.
Weekdays, 11.
And weekends?
Weekends, probably about that, no later than midnight, I would think.
Midnight?
Yeah.
If I'm not mistaken, clean up by 12:30.
Yes.
Let's talk about loading.
Sure.
Because loading through an alley doesn't make friends with anybody who's in the alley.
Could you change the image to the site plan?
Melissa can. She's got those skills. So, I see that there's two ways of loading, right? There's through the parking lot, and then there is through the alley. How do we stop the loading through the alley?
Use the loading in the lot.
Okay, so you guys are willing to limit your loading to the parking lot?
The idea is that that would be the main loading. The only reason that we would ever not load there is if it's in the middle of an event, and the idea of taking a delivery in an afternoon-evening event is going on seems fairly unlikely to us.
Okay. Can you even imagine a situation where that would happen? Where you would have an event happening, and you would be taking a delivery?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
I don't think so. I mean, I think most deliveries will happen before any time there is an event, so it's not going to be an issue.
Okay. And getting back to those really big events, what, how many have, how many do you anticipate hosting of those very large events?
Well, we really don't have a number yet, because this is a business that's going to evolve.
Right.
And we may have a lot, we may don't, we may not have a lot. We just have to open up and have our doors open and see how it evolves.
But what's your, so what's, what type of events is your business plan based on?
Right, the event, the business plan is based on it being a banquet hall, weddings, bar mitzvahs, meetings, that kind of thing.
Okay, so smaller.
Fundraising.
Smaller, more manageable things.
Right, with the seated, the seated number, which is what the occupancy is based on.
Okay. Okay.
Have you read the, have you read staff's recommendation as part of the packet tonight, to the recommendation to the board? Have you read the conditions that they recommend?
I went through it, yes.
And you're comfortable with those conditions on the special use permit? So, one of the conditions that was recommended was that the parking garage provide proof of the agreement you've reached with them. Another was that you would be required to use valet service and the parking lot at 525 Howard for events between 41 and 100 patrons, and shuttle service for events over 100 patrons?
Yes, I've read that.
And you're fine with those conditions?
I'm fine with that condition.
Okay.
And employee parking. So, I heard that there's some cannibalization from Peckish Pig's employees, but does that mean they're replacing Peckish Pig's employees?
No, I mean, it's possible that, that somebody having a wedding there could hire their own caterer, and so we included a maximum, I think it was seven employees that would, and we're encouraging them to take public transportation and not use the, not use the lot.
Okay. So, you know that then the, that the employees also can't park in meter spots, right?
Right, yeah, we're very, very aware of that.
Okay. Okay.
What are the hours of operation that you expect to run?
Again, I think it's probably been a 5 to 11 most of the time. Maybe on the weekends, we can have something early in the morning.
Because of the nature of the business being events, it would, there might be something earlier in the day, but generally, that's the, later in the day.
I mean, I can foresee, maybe if there was a corporate event, they want to have lectures, maybe that will happen during the day, but I don't know how often that's going to happen.
I think DAPR has suggested that it's Sunday through Thursday from 8 to 11, 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., and Friday and Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. That seems.
Reasonable.
To fit what you would potentially need, because you'd get that 8 o'clock for any full-day events. What are you doing to the outside, again?
Sure, so, right now, there's a single paint storefront around the front.
Yeah.
Basically, it's cleaning off the peeling paint, new windows. If, I don't know, Melissa, if you can bring up the elevations. Or the plan is fine, too, yeah.
I saw a request from DAPR to try and keep the existing storefront. That doesn't seem like that's happening.
It was brought up.
Yeah.
And I, what we've tried to do is find that balance between what works for a banquet hall.
Right.
And what works for storefront. So, we've, if you go back to the plan, we moved a meeting room, which would typically kind of be back of house, up to the front, that office there, so that has full storefront glass.
I see.
And that can be, you know, made to look nice. And then, yes, we did think it was appropriate to limit it to new, energy-efficient, code-compliant, clear story lighting, so that there was privacy.
And just out of curiosity, curiosity, what are your new panels? What materials are you thinking of there?
We are not there yet.
You don't know? Okay, all right. All comes down to money, right? Okay.
The alley in the back, is it two-way traffic allowed?
I think it's a 16-foot alley.
Yeah, but is it allowed to have two-way traffic? Or it's.
As far as I know.
One-way?
As far as I know, it's two-way, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Does anybody else have any other questions?
I'm, because Peckish Pig has been so successful, and everyone is so happy with what they have brought to Howard Street, I'm wondering if their, what their relationship is, it sounds as though they are doing this somewhat in conjunction with you.
Yes, we're collaborating. They're, they're going to manage the project.
Okay.
I mean, this is sort of an, in a way, extension to their current plan.
Sure.
Current business, yes.
Okay, well, that's, that's good to know.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody here who would like to comment? If you can start with your name and address, please.
Hello, my name's Ryan Kettlecamp, 1126 Brummel Street, about four blocks away. So, I just wanted to, my wife and I, or I'm speaking for my wife, we're both in support of the project. If I could say something, it's that so frequently, at meetings like this, there are people standing up here and saying, "I don't want this, I don't want this, I don't want this." And I guess as a person from the neighborhood, we're both here to say, or two people from the neighborhood, we're both here to say that we support this project. We love what Peckish Pig has done for the neighborhood in terms of revitalizing Howard Street. We love what the theater has done for the neighborhood, and we have a very strong feeling about this project. And the steps that they've taken in terms of seeking out parking in this parking garage that the project will work and that the neighborhood won't be impacted. So, we're frequently users of the amenities on Howard Street, and we just wanted to say we support this. That's important, so.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
That is a rare statement. Anyone else?
Good evening, Matt Rogers, 133 Clyde Avenue. I'm about a block from the current, from the proposed project. I want to speak to a couple of things here. Number one, I did an event fundraiser for a local not-for-profit a little over a year ago, and one of the problems we found was that there's no place to have a banquet for people over 200, when you're having, hosting over 200 people in the City of Evanston, unless you go to the Orienton, which is not always appropriate for the type of event you want to throw, plus it is a very, very expensive venue. And so, having an event space that could seat more than 200 people, I think would encourage people, especially Evanston not-for-profits, when they're doing fundraising events, to focus in on keeping that in Evanston rather than going to Chicago or Skokie or wherever else that they end up having to go, because they can't, there's no place that really can accommodate them, and at the same time, makes sense for them to have the type of event they want to have. A couple of other not-for-profits that I've worked with here have been doing events in Chicago for years, because they have 220, 240 people, and there's just no place that can accommodate that type of venue, or that type of a crowd. So, I, I think that having something like this that can hold a larger crowd is definitely worth it to keep business in the City of Evanston. Since I do live in the neighborhood, I'm familiar with the parking in the neighborhood. We've worked very hard to kind of fix the parking in our neighborhood. We currently are an Evanston-only parking district, so as long as you pay your wheel tax, you can park in the neighborhood. If you live in Chicago and Skokie, Willmett, wherever, and you're coming down, you cannot park on the residential streets in the city and that, the city does, in the neighborhood, and the city does police that very vigilantly. So, I'm not horribly concerned about the parking. One of the other things I've noticed is that in walking by Peckish Pig, many times I walk my dogs there, there's a constant flow of Ubers coming and going. I think that's the new way people are traveling these days. People are not necessarily driving themselves, especially if they know they're going to be drinking. It's a lot easier just to take an Uber, or this is close enough to public transportation. Again, it's probably about a 10-minute walk from the train over to this location. Additionally, this property has sat, one half of this property has sat vacant for the entire time I've lived in the neighborhood, which is about 15 years, and I'm not saying that I'm a 15-year resident, because I know how we all hate that sort of stuff. But what I'm saying is that there's, there's been a property sitting there that has not been being used for anything. And even when Sherman Williams was in the property space that they were in, it was very much a contractor-type place. A lot of people don't necessarily shop for their paint at Sherman Williams, but that's where contractors go. So, in terms of the economic impact in the neighborhood, I don't think that building was being to the best use, being used to the best use that it could be. Couple other little things that I just heard in comments tonight that I'd kind of like to address. The storefront was mentioned. The existing storefront is not in good shape. I don't know that it's worth trying to salvage anything there. It's probably better to try to build from scratch or replace what you can and repair what you can, but in terms of trying to keep it in its current condition, I don't think that's something that really could, could, would be feasible or make sense. The other aspect I wanted to bring up was there's been some discussion about the alley. Can you go to the site plan, please, Melissa? So, the alley, which you can't really see from here, but it's kind of at the back of the parking lot there, which is closed off by a gate, there is an alley that runs north. And most of the parking runs, most of the off-street parking garages are on that side of the building, that side, those sides of the building. And so, I think that even if you were to allow for deliveries to be made in that alley, people can come down the alley, turn to their, to their left, and then head down Clyde if there's a truck blocking the way at the end of Calent. So, as long as the truck doesn't block where that alley intersects the other, which is, again, far away from the, from the building entrance, it wouldn't make sense to do that there. I don't think that would create a large problem. As a matter of fact, it may help, because a lot of people use that alley to circumvent Howard Street and go racing through there during rush hour in an attempt to avoid having to deal with Howard Street. So, that actually might be advantageous to have a delivery truck there during certain times of the day. Those are kind of the points I wanted to raise. Again, I'm fully in favor of a project like this coming in. This is one of the last remaining properties on Howard Street that needs to be developed. And we've seen a lot of change in my neighborhood during the time, as we've seen businesses like Peckish Pig Ward 8, Jamaican Good To Go, the new theater company come in. Howard Street is actually coming back to life, and having dead buildings kind of sitting in places just kind of kills that vibe. And so, when, when the building at Chicago and, and Howard gets built, the City Grange Building, I think that's going to help a lot, because that will make one continuous strip of businesses from the Howard Street L all the way into this business district, and it will make people not as afraid to walk through there, because things will be happening, things will be alive, there will be people on the street. So, again, I can, I can only say positive things about a project like this, and I hope you will recommend approval to city council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Okay, with that, did you guys want to do any summation? I do have one question that just came up, just in looking at the site plan.
I do, too.
So, if you guys can come back up. So, my question is really about how the valet and/or Uber services work, given that I'm looking at the site plan and that there are three parking spaces in front of the lot, right, in, in front of the property, and so we don't necessarily want to back up traffic on Howard and all that sort of stuff. So, what's the plan for that?
Yeah, if you go to the site plan, that was also something that came up in DAPR, and it was the reason that, I think we noted it, so the drop-off.
Yeah, sometimes we ask obvious questions just to get them on the record.
Yeah, no, no. It's easy to miss. So, yeah, the, the great thing about this lot, this site, is that it has a lot that you can pull into, so that you don't have to back up traffic on Howard, and you can pull in and drop somebody off and proceed through the alley. And the same thing with the shuttle service from, from the parking garage.
Okay, thank you.
So, my question, just because I, didn't occur to me to ask it the last time you were standing up, was where is the food going to come from for the events?
So, I mean, if, if you go back to the floor plan, there is a commercial kitchen planned as part of it, so hopefully, most of the food happens there.
But is that going to be like a prepare food there, or is that going to be a keep food warm and heated up there?
It is going to be designed to, to cook the food there, but it would also have the, the resources to just be a warming kitchen if, if somebody decides to cater it, have the event catered from outside.
And so, outside catering will be an option?
Yes, absolutely. I mean, Peckish Pig definitely will have the option to bring food over from Peckish Pig, but if people who are renting the space for a wedding, they'll have the choice to, you know, use any caterer they want. And most caterers really would just use this as a heating place, prep, as a prep kitchen rather than actually come and cook from scratch.
And is there an expectation, I assume that alcohol will be served.
Yes.
On-site? And so, have you already gone through the steps you need to, to have that permission?
Well, Peckish Pig is the one that's going to hold a liquor license, so we're going to work with them to do that, since you already have a liquor license.
Okay.
So, is there anything you'd like to say in summation? You don't have to.
Thank you for your time.
Great, thanks so much, I appreciate that.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you. And with that, we are going to close the record and enter deliberations. So, thoughts from the board on this project?
I actually think community member Rogers did a nice job of, of summarizing a lot of the positives, as well as the other neighbors that spoke. This is a very nice development of a space that's currently in waste and would complete the corridor from Chicago Avenue down Howard through what's become a very nice revitalized stretch.
Thank you.
I agree, I'm fully supportive of this, and it is just, it's been a long time coming and for everyone who has contributed to the revitalization of Howard Street, and I think that this project is going to continue that, that progress. It's a good thing for Evanston, so, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm looking forward to a business like this on this strip. I feel like Howard is a very different place than it was just a few years ago, and this is a great addition to that. So, I agree with the project.
Thank you.
And I'm in favor of the project. I think it's a good use of the existing building.
Thank you.
I'm in favor of the project, too. I would allow myself to give you two advices, just architecturally. If you have a lot of people and you need drop-offs, I think you should have a kind of alternative parking layout that allows for several cars to drop off simultaneously, because you will run into this definitely in large, where you have large crowds. The second thing, one typical thing for banquet halls, it's a large portico or arcade or large awning, because you will not have events only in good weather. It will be rain, it will be freezing, and people coming out of their cars, they need to go immediately under some roof and enter the building. So, you can afford probably to make something like that, starting from the parking and even going to the street, so that you can have an uninterrupted way for everybody to get inside. Otherwise, I'm for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are good suggestions. As always, Carol, thank you. I agree with all of my colleagues. It's a, I'm excited about the use of the space and the reuse of the space, and I'm very pleased to see that you've been paying attention to the last couple of banquet halls, because you've come with a plan for sound attenuation, and you've come with a plan for parking, and you've come with a plan for all of those things that we generally are particular about. So, thank you for that. And with that, I will go through the standards for the special uses. There are nine of them, and the first one is, it is one of the special uses specifically listed in the zoning ordinance. It is, so that standard has been met. It's in keeping with the purposes and policies of the adopted comprehensive general plan and the zoning ordinance as amended from time to time. The comprehensive general plan, some of the goals are to promote growth and redevelopment and to strengthen our economic base. This clearly achieves both of those objectives by allowing for redevelopment of space, and it also allows for a business that is successful to be able to grow and cater to a new market, pun intended. So that standard has been met. Number three, it will not cause a negative cumulative effect when its effect is considered in conjunction with the cumulative effect of various special uses of all types on the immediate neighborhood and the effect of the proposed type of special use upon the city as a whole. So we do not have very many banquet hall special uses in the city, so it certainly doesn't affect that, although there's, there's a rash of them recently. And certainly, there are no other special uses in the neighborhood. So I think that that standard has certainly been met. Number four, it does not interfere with or diminish the value of the property in the neighborhood. A developed property is certainly more valuable to the neighborhood than an undeveloped property, and you've taken steps to mitigate any nuisances to adjacent properties. And by doing that, you certainly are maintaining and are increasing their value to their property. So I do believe that that standard has been met. Number five, it can be adequately served by public facilities and services. It is near public transit, and so I do believe that that standard has been met. Number six, it does not cause undue traffic congestion. Howard is a commercial strip. There's going to be traffic congestion. There's going to be traffic congestion during busier times, but you've dealt, you've come up with a plan of how to deal with that in the best way possible, which is to get as many people off the street, get them unloaded, and then get their cars moved out, or to get them to park someplace else, and then bring them over en masse. So I think that what you have done to mitigate you, your, your choices in mitigating the traffic nuisance and the traffic congestion helped to meet that standard, so I believe that one has been met. Number seven, it preserves significant historical and architectural resources. Certainly is not a lovely building, but you're making it look nicer, so I appreciate that. So that standard doesn't even apply. Number eight, it preserves significant natural and environmental features. That standard does not apply. And number nine, it complies with all other applicable regulations of the district in which it is located and other applicable ordinances. You certainly will get every business license that's required by the city, and so all of those will be met. So I do believe that that standard has been met. As far as I understand it, there are three, in addition to some of our standards for a special use, there are three conditions, right? That events in the parking lot require DAPR approval, that they get a parking commitment, and that the hours of operation are Sunday through Thursday, 8 to 11, Friday through Saturday, 9 to 12.
Those are DAPR's conditions, or those are the ones you're saying we need to include?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, okay, so I'll make a motion in the matter, oh.
The, the fourth one that DAPR had recommended is that they provide shuttle service if there are events over 100.
On it.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so I move in the matter ZBA 19ZMJV-0021 with respect to the proposed development at 619 Howard Street that we recommend to City Council to approve the special use requested, subject to the following conditions. First, that, consistent with event parking, the applicant provide proof of written agreement with the parking garage for parking during large events. Second, that, sorry. That valet service and utilization of the parking lot at 525 Howard Street be provided for events with 41 to 100 patrons, and shuttle service to the garage from the event space, to and from the event space for events over 100 patrons. Also, that the hours of operation be limited from, can you just repeat them for the record, since you have them written?
Sure, it's Sunday through Thursday from 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM, and Friday through Saturday from 9:00 AM to 12:00 AM.
Thank you. Next, with respect to employee parking, that employees not be permitted to use street parking. Which one am I forgetting now?
Deliveries.
Nope. Was there another DAPR one there?
Uh, no.
Okay.
I don't know if we want to include deliveries. Doesn't sound like it's going to be a problem, though.
No, I don't think so. And last, that the project otherwise be developed in accordance with the testimony and documents submitted, including the commitment with respect to, with respect to insulation from noise.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? And with a vote of six to zero, you go to City Council with a recommendation for approval. Good luck with your project. All right, moving on, other business. Melissa, I hear there's some other business.
I have multiple announcements to make. We will start with, um, let's see. Everyone should have received an email from my manager, Scott Mangum, about the camp workshop, like, a couple of weeks ago. Your email reminded me of it. So everyone, if you are interested, you are invited to, it is the Commission Assistance and Mentoring Program, and it is being held by the National Alliance of Preservation Commissions on April 26. There is a, a cost to it, but because you devote time on this board, you are invited to attend at no cost, lunches included, but you do have to RSVP. It is primarily teaching about preservation issues, but it'll, I'm sure it will wrap into things that you guys deal with regularly here. So everyone is encouraged to attend that. Planning and zoning staff will be at it. It is open to the public. If, if you guys know of anyone else who's interested, they do have to pay their own way then. I think it's $25. So there is that. Additionally, be on the watch for your ethics statements from the county and the city. Even if you are leaving the board, you still have to do those for another year or so afterwards, so keep that in mind. And, and just remember that there are two of them. I think one has gone out so far, and the other one is real, real close. Lastly, update on zoning board membership and chairmanship. Currently, it sounds like what we're going to do is do a public notice so that it is on the agenda for our next meeting, requesting that for an interim period of 60 days, that the current chair be allowed to continue as chair. That is up to a vote of you guys. And that would only be for an interim time period. During that time, staff will continue to look for a permanent solution, which may be dissolving term limits. Not that you're required to stay forever, but everyone who wants to. Along those lines, continue to encourage any friends in the field to apply to be on the board. It is hard to get people on here, and this is why we're going this route of seeing how we can keep full membership on the board. And if Mary Beth is willing to stay on for 60 days.
I am certainly willing to stay on for 60 days.
If I require a motion, I'll move that we keep Mary Beth on for 60 days.
You can't do it yet, because I have to notice for it.
Forever.
So hold that for, until our next meeting, and then we can do it.
The only other comment I'd like to make is that, as zoning board chair, right, I've been the liaison to the Economic Development Committee. I think it's almost two years that I've been doing that. I think that's probably time to rotate through and get someone else to have that experience, if they should like it. Since you don't have a full board tonight, and I'm not sure who's interested in doing that. I know that Lisa was, she commented on that at least once. I don't know if there's anybody else who's interested in being that liaison to economic development. That's a big no from that end of the board? Okay, awesome. How about this end?
Okay, I was, sure, sure. I was encouraging Mary McCauley to, to get into that. I think it's right in her wheelhouse.
Okay, so I think that, we'll deal with that at the next meeting, then.
Yep, it will be on the agenda, it will be publicly noted.
Is there an economic development meeting in April?
I will find out.
Because technically, I'm done, so somebody would need to be at that meeting.
Yeah, wasn't it for the 24th, when I did one of the quorum calls?
I, you did, and I'm over on the 28th, so I can still make that one. So we're fine.
Okay.
Make a motion to adjourn?
I second. It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Never.
Thank you.